The call to order the Hollis School Board for Wednesday, September 30, 2020 at, well, 5:59. Welcome everyone to the Hollis School Board. We normally meet at 6:00 PM on the first Wednesday of the month, but given the current COVID situation, we find the need to deviate from that practice temporarily. Meetings of the school board are volunteers from the community who have been elected to serve up to a three-year term. Our board consists of five members. To transact any legal business of the board, a meeting must be publicly noticed and a quorum of the board is required consisting of a minimum of three members. The five members of the board are myself, Robert Mancher, Teri Farid is our vice chair, Brooke Arthur is our board secretary, we have Amy Kellner as our lead policy representative, and Carol Roy, our board representative of the Hollis School Budget Committee. Our recording secretary is Dawn McMillan. With that, I'll hold off ground rules for public input if we see we're going to have any. With that, we'll call for agenda adjustments at this time.
It's not really an adjustment, but I did want to make the board aware when we discuss the SAU rent and the long-term lease, we'll do that with regards to the bond and kind of start to talk about the bond again and decide if that's a direction the board wants to go for October, November, when we get more into what I'll call budget season.
Uh huh. Okay. Fair enough. Any adjustments from the board members? Seeing none, we'll move to correspondence, resignations, and nominations.
Yes, I received a correspondence that I'm going to read into the record, and then I provided the chair with the correspondence as well. This is the Hollis Brookline Nondiscrimination and Equity Initiative. This came from a community group, and I'd like to read it into the record tonight, and then later on tonight's meeting, we have a discussion on this topic, which I'll elaborate further. Whereas the district is committed to nondiscrimination, whereas Hollis Brookline is an inclusive community, whereas the district recognizes that issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion affect all members of the Hollis Brookline community regardless of their background. Whereas many institutions of learning within the state of New Hampshire have developed policy regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, and whereas the current COVID-19 pandemic may bring unique challenges related to that are yet to be determined. Therefore, may it be resolved that the SAU 41 school district will make diversity, equity, and inclusion a strategic priority by actively supporting such efforts, and SAU 41 will review its policies and procedures relative to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and release a plan to address its findings. These actions may include professional development, drafting new or editing existing policies, programs, and procedures, as well as a curriculum review. Thank you.
So we'll...
Andy, can we just point out that that's an edited version of what was originally read into the record back in our July meeting for those folks who don't recognize that it's just...
Yes, this is an ongoing discussion, and I think when we talk about it during our discussion as a board tonight, it kind of all comes together.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks.
May I ask a question also?
I would like to reserve, is it related to the document? I would like to reserve it for our diversity, equity, and inclusion update as part of that discussion.
I just want to clarify a word, Andy, if I may. Andy, did you say this is a union group?
No, community.
Community. I'm so sorry, I could not hear you properly.
And I could have misspoke, so...
Okay. Anything else?
Not there.
Correspondence or anything like that? Okay. Let's move ahead to approval of the meeting minutes of August 2020.
Correction, it's a September meeting minutes. That's a typo on my part.
Oh, quite right. Yeah, we did meet earlier this month. So let's do the September.
Let me do this?
Meeting.
Yes. I move to approve the Hollis School Board, excuse me, let me...
Take two.
Okay. Hollis School Board minutes from September 1st, 2020. The following amendments were offered. Page 2, line 37, delete the E at the end of the line. Page 3, line 22, replace "for" with "of." Page 7, line 46, replace "arises" with "arise."
Any other amendments at this time?
I second.
Okay.
Is there any seconds already? Did I...
Okay. Seeing no other adjustments or changes, all in favor of approving the minutes, 5:00. I guess we can move straight into public input. We're moving right along here. All right, just before we open the floor for public input, the board conducts business through meetings held in public. All those present from the community are invited to stay and listen to the board's discussions, deliberations, and actions. Public input is permitted during the public input portion of our agenda, and when the chair opens the floor for public comment, at that time, public input is most welcome and encouraged. The intention of public input is for the board to gather, consider, and consider the sense of the public in making its decisions related to our posted agenda items. As per Policy BA, when the chair opens the floor for public input, please state your name and address for the record. Address your agenda-related remarks to the chair only, and whenever possible, be specific as to the actions you wish the board to take up and why. Statements are generally limited to three minutes. The chair will also recognize point-of-order challenges from any board member at any time during the meeting for non-inherence to the posted agenda or regular order processes and procedures for conducting a public meeting. With that, we'll open public...
Rob?
Public input, yes.
Can I just note the time is 6:06?
6:06.
So if we do have public that arrives, the posted time is 6:15?
Yeah, if we see an influx at 6:15, we'll certainly give them the benefit of the doubt as they come in.
Thank you.
Okay? All right. Public input is now open.
Hi, my name is Jason Naso.
Hey, Jason.
I live at 244 Worcester Road. So I just want to start off and say I know that there's been a lot of balancing of different resources, and that's been tough, and I'm happy you guys are all working at it. I have two kids, one in second and one in first grade, and during the summer, we got the notifications that we had to pick whether they're either going to go into the classroom or they're going to do the remote learning.
Yeah.
And at the time, it was explained to us that the remote, or I'm sorry, that the classroom learning was effectively the remote learning, but sitting in the school. And there wasn't really any other aspect to it, and then also, we'd have the flexibility to change. So my son decided that he absolutely wanted to go to school. So he went, and my daughter was kind of, she didn't really care as much, and she would have preferred to stay home. We have one smaller one, and she would like to stay home. So she decided a few days before school that she'd actually rather go and see her friends and be with, you know, be with her peers. And when we contacted the school, we were told that it's not possible, and we would be on a wait list and have to wait until someone actually moved. So that's obviously, that's a big change from what we were originally told and when we made, when we made these decisions. And it goes both ways. So my daughter would like to go back, but we also considered that, you know, if there was an outbreak or something were to happen in the school, and we felt more comfortable pulling my son out, that we would also have flexibility to do that. So I just wanted to, I guess, hear from the board what is the status of that, because my wife wrote an email. She encouraged us to come out to the meeting on the 30th and said there might be a crossover date at October 9th, or there would be something planned for...
Yeah, it's my, so it's my understanding is that administration is asking parents to stick with their original decision until October 9th. That was my last understanding, before there can be consideration to maybe change those things. So I'll look to Gina, maybe to provide some additional detail on that.
Sure. So, you know, as you had mentioned, we asked folks to pick, and we had to do that in order to make class rosters and identify staffing needs, and we couldn't really share who your teacher was until we knew if you were going to be in person or remote, and we couldn't identify how many remote teaching assignments we needed until we knew how many remote students we were going to have. So we definitely had to make some strict, you know, some strict deadlines at that point. And then we asked folks to stick to October 9th because it's a remote learning day, and at that point, we would have been in school for a month, and we could take a look at, do we have the capacity to add more students to the physical environment, or would we need to take an entire cohort of a grade who was remote to come into person? And we really just needed a checkpoint to just stop and take a look, identify resources that we have or need before we could honor requests to shift in between, because it does require potentially additional staffing or space that we may or may not have. You know, classroom spaces, because some classes are being occupied by other items when items had to be removed from the classroom to make more space between the desks. So that's where we stand right now. So we've asked principals to hold on to a waiting list for those requests so we can identify them on a classroom-by-classroom basis, because some classrooms have room for more kids to come back to, because let's say there's 16 kids in the classroom, and then they can hold 18, but some are maxed out. So we just, you know, have asked them to maintain a list so we can evaluate that on the 9th, and then get back to families for the 13th.
Okay, so if I understand it correctly, so the flexibility that was initially offered in the beginning, that's not there anymore? That's case by, being evaluated case by case?
We do have to evaluate it case by case, and I apologize if complete flexibility was offered to you, but because it relies on staffing and ADA accommodations, there is no way we can guarantee 100% flexibility.
Okay. So do I continue to follow up with the school, or do I continue to follow, or do I follow up with the school again on October 9th?
So absolutely, if your name is not on the list, then put your name on the list for any switch.
It is on the list already.
Okay. So then I would expect for you to hear back from Mrs. Spicki, either on the 9th or right after that, because that's our expected date to, if we are going to honor changes, that's when we can do it, understanding that the change would involve the change of a classroom teacher assignment.
Okay. All right.
If I have questions about this, should we wait until a later discussion point?
Let me just see how it...
Since this isn't on our agenda, but...
Well, I think you could bring it up during the principal's report, the opening school book.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, let's do that. Just to clarify, we are on track for the October 9th consideration of parents asking for a change.
Yes, I can't tell you how many we can honor, but that is our, that is our date right now.
Okay. All right. So October 9th is still the date.
But in order not to confuse things further, are you announcing on October 9th who will be moved per their request, or are you saying that October 9th is the date you will begin to make an assessment? I don't want Mr. Asor or anybody else to expect something...
Sure, so October 9th is a fully remote learning day, so we won't have students in the building. That's the first time that our principals aren't running around following up on daily symptom monitoring and right around to the nurse's office and kind of monitoring all of that. So really, I told them that that's their time to sit down, evaluate all of their classroom, in-classroom assignments and physical space, and be able to make a determination per grade level, per classroom.
So parents may not hear on October 9th, but...
So they might, yeah. I mean, it'll probably...
Just a little louder, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but there's that span that you two all...
Sure. So I can't answer for sure, but my expectation is that by the end of the day, worst-case scenario of the morning of the 13th, but the hope was that the switch would be made for the 13th.
For the 13th, okay. Does that make sense to you at least?
Because the 13th, we have a Monday holiday, so the 13th would be the first day back in school after that.
Right. Okay.
So it's a Tuesday, I guess?
A Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday, okay. All right. Any other public input? All right.
Hi. Is this on?
Yes.
It's on for the people... And you can hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
All right. And I will address you, because I know that's what I'm supposed to do.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm Tiffany Testa, 101 Moore Hill Road. I'm addressing you, but I'm also addressing them, the board. And there's so much that I wish I could say, but I'll just, I'll probably ramble, but just listen carefully, because I've got some messages in there. I want to share a little bit of my story and how I got to this town, and why I'm an educator, and why I'm speaking right now in, thank you, that's more my level, in support of furthering on a better, more progressive, quicker timeline, the SEL and DEI work of our community. So I, my parents, I have a mother who was adopted, I have, both parents are from Brooklyn. They live, they grew up in a diverse community. My mother's mother divorced, fell in love with a black man, and married a black man. So I have a black aunt and black cousins, and we would visit them in Baltimore in a black community, and that was just my life. I grew up in New Jersey, I grew up in Florida, and then I moved to New Hampshire, northern New Hampshire, and there was literally one black resident in my town, and he was called the N-word by any, everyone, and I didn't even get it. I was like, what, wait, what's going on here? So that was when I was younger, when I was a teenager. And then I wanted to be a marine biologist, and I got involved in the school, because I wasn't quite sure if I was going to go to grad school up in Humane, Orno. So I got involved in the school, and I saw some of the amazing science they were doing. I'm a science person, and I was like, this is unbelievable, what some of the teachers were doing in this school I was substituting in. And I really connected with kids, and I listened to their story, and I built relationships. So all of my educational foundation has been on a philosophy of building relationships with kids, because I think it's a foundation that's really important. So I became an educator, I've been an educator for 25 years. I started off at Sauhegan High School. Sauhegan High School takes an alternative look at education that puts relationships first, you know, and so that is what I was ingrained in, putting relationships and community first. I moved over to Theracady, which is another school that really emphasized that. I then moved on to Merrimack High School, and there is where it hit me that not all, not all public schools necessarily put those priorities in that, and there were priorities in other things. And so in my time in education, I've really thought about what is it that's important for the kids in building relationships is? So that's what my history as an educator has been in SEL and DEI and things like that. This district, this, in this reopening, I said, I've said this at many boards, I said, come on, let's look at SEL, let's look at DEI, but we as a community were really, really over like masks and things like that. I didn't really, I, you know, I was kind of disappointed in it. A resolution was brought from some community members, I was actually one of them, that said, look, we have to pay attention to this stuff. It's important. It's going on. I now work at a school that we give voice to the kids, we give them opportunities to have conversations, it's really important work, and we want to do it, and we try to do it here, and we've done it in some ways, but we need to look at how we can do it more. Because my sons live here, and I want my sons to grow up to be critical thinkers, to use their voice and use it well, and I want them to have opportunities in their school where they can do that. So I'm asking us, like, put the other stuff aside. I have seen in every board of this district, people come up and speak and try to politicize this, and I want this board to stand up for education and for the kids, all right? It's not a big deal. The resolution that's been presented to this board is simply saying, you know what? We recognize this is what education is about. It's a foundation, and it's important. Let's think about it. Let's do a self-assessment. Let's look at what we got. Let's see how we can do it better. Every place that I have worked in is about saying, we're great, and let's do it better for the sake of the kids. That's all. It's not a big deal. So let's stop making it a big deal, let's stop wasting our time going, oh, it's got to look here and look there. No, just say it. Just make the commitment or not. Own it. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany. Anyone else?
A little bit taller than. Is this on?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
I'm going to remind folks, the microphones are for broadcasting to the live stream, they're not attached to amplifiers.
Excellent, thank you.
That's why you're not hearing us louder, because there aren't any speakers, and I apologize for that.
Okay, wonderful. Just wanted to make sure that people that needed to hear could hear. Appreciate it. My name is Marie Ramos. I live in Hollis on Colburn Lane. I wanted to rise in support of the spirit of the resolution regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion that was proposed, but I wanted to bring a different aspect of this as it relates to the necessity to address equity within our current time as we respond as a district to our COVID epidemic pandemic. We have several now research and within education that have demonstrated that the achievement gap and the educational gaps within the United States are starkly going to worsen, and we're not sure as an educational community and of a body of researchers whether or not that achievement gap will ever be able to narrow again. Why is that important for Hollis? I was recently on a panel discussion with Richard Rothstein, you may know him as the author for, who wrote The Color of Law, and he discussed the policies and practices that led to the suburbanization in America, but more importantly, how it connected between the monetary and economic advantages given to suburban Americans. It also discusses the segregation that evolved as a result of these practices, policies, and procedures throughout our American history. Why is this important, though, for us here in Hollis? It's important because now we're seeing as a result of COVID that we have unprecedented challenges as districts and as schools to be able to provide the optimization of experience from an educational standpoint for all students regardless of how they are receiving their education. And I want to make this point very clear. Although our district and the conversations that have come throughout the board's meetings thus far have been solely around race and equity, we need to understand that equity spans much farther than just race, racism, sexism. It also discusses how are we going to equitably, how are we going to provide an optimal and excellent experience for all students regardless of what environment they're in. The reason that this is important now as a school district is because of COVID, we now have to think as a community, how are we going to provide an optimal experience of excellence for our students that is not going to minimize and pull back their possibility for achievement as future leaders? We all know, and I'm very proud to admit, that I am a resident of Hollis because of this demonstrated history of excellence within the state and nationally for our students. And so in order to continue that work, it is absolutely imperative that we take this opportunity of making concepts of diversity, equity, and inclusion a priority for our district, because we are now seeing real time what the effects of not having opportunities within the spring has done for our children and our students now, but we don't know what those effects are going to be long-term. And so I have a couple of articles here that describe what has the pandemic done from an educational standpoint for our students in America, particularly in demographics that we live in here. One by Richard Rothstein, one article from 2017, actually, as well, that discusses in the Journal of Educational Psychology. And then I also have an interesting article here by the McKinsey &amp; Company, which is actually an economics firm, but it discusses how COVID-19 and student learning in the United States will cause a hurt that can potentially last a lifetime. I want to read out loud before I close a recommended amendment to the original resolution, which has already been in front of the board, but as such, I would like to offer this friendly amendment for us to really focus in on what is important here, which is not political, is trying to figure out what is best for our students. The recommended amendment goes as such. Whereas the district is committed to nondiscrimination, whereas Hollis Brookline is an inclusive community, whereas the district recognizes that issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion affects all members of the Hollis Brookline community regardless of their background, whereas many institutions of learning within the state of New Hampshire have developed policies regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, whereas the current COVID-19 pandemic may bring unique challenges related to that which are yet to be examined. And therefore, may it be resolved that one, the SAU 41 school districts will make diversity, equity, and inclusion a strategic priority by actively supporting such efforts. Two, SAU 41 will review its policies and procedures relative to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and release a plan to address its findings. These actions may include professional development, drafting new or existing policies and procedures, curriculum review, et cetera. Now, we're already starting this, thankfully, by the leadership of our superintendent. This is simply reflecting what we are already starting, and hopefully, that as time goes on, and as the people around this great board table change, that those priorities will continue to stay in legacy. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other input at this time? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and advance to the principal's report, opening of school update, enrollment update, and staffing.
I'm sorry, there are...
Yeah.
There's more public input.
Oh, there is?
So, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Speak even though your voice shakes.
Can I tell, can I speak or something?
No, no, no. What I would, what I would advise...
What would you recommend, then? Say someone felt intimidated to speak to the board.
Well, I'm just, I'm addressing that right now. So what I would advise, if you would like, after our meeting, you can come up to any one of us and approach us, talk to us. We're happy to listen. It's not just this moment in time during our meeting that you can engage us. There's email, you can catch us tonight. We're always, we keep our open door, so please, we don't bite, we're, just like you, we're parents in the neighborhood, so...
As a teacher, I'm pretty darn used to using my voice.
Yeah. So by all means, I understand it can, even with this little group, even just walking up to the mic can be, take a little bit of getting used to.
Yeah, I still shake every time.
Yeah. Please, I invite you to talk to us outside of the public meeting if you feel better. Yep.
Marie, if you have links to those...
We'll scan them and get them to the members. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead with the principal's report on...
Yeah, I still shake every time.
Yeah. Please, I invite you to talk to us outside of the public meeting if you feel better. Yep.
Marie, if you have links to those...
We'll scan them and get them to the members. Thank you.
Thanks, Marie.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead with the principal's report on the school opening updates.
You have an extensive principal's report in your packet.
Yes.
And I had asked Paula and Candy to be as thorough as possible. One of the things we are trying to do, or continue to try to do, is limit administrators at meetings because we need to be conscious of the fact that we need to open schools and we need principals. So with that in mind, I will share that we've had a tremendous opening. And I want to thank Paula and Candy for their leadership, and Elster in special education, and Nicole Tommaselli around the curriculum issues. Our teachers have done just a wonderful job. And I've been very happy with the balance I've seen. You know, yes, we're back to academics. I was in the other day watching classes, you know, first and second graders doing some, you know, and putting the parts together and coming to a whole. But at the same time, I've seen both in person and remotely some wonderful lessons around social emotional learning, playing, talking. And we just continue to improve. And the highlight for me is my office looks out to the SAU field. So every day, I get to see kids again. And from March till the beginning of school, that didn't happen. And to see them play and to see them excited, to hear their screams, their laughter, and occasionally their cries when they fall, it's just been outstanding. Bob, Gina, and I make it a point all the time to be in schools because it reminds us why we do some of the other things that are on the agenda, like budgets and all of those discussions, because it's about the kids. In terms of the procedures, they go very well. You know, we always have our fun little stories. Today was a young lady who got off the bus and walked into school and was asked by her teacher, where was her mask? She's like, oh, I forgot it. So it's going to happen, you know? The teacher, we have plenty of masks. We took care of her immediately. We didn't want mom to have to make the extra trip down just over a mask. And again, it was just remarkable to see, you know, her maturity dealing with the situation. And those are some of the skills that we see because of COVID that we necessarily might not have seen at such young ages. In terms of our custodial staff, I need to commend them. Our new facilities manager, Lance Finnebaum, has done an outstanding job working with them to make sure we have consistent practices and that they're being followed. And later tonight, we'll talk a little bit about, you know, what's a deep clean means because I know people at home hear that term. And we felt it was important to kind of go through that. As the board is well aware, we did have our first case. It was funny, the very first case in the SAU actually occurred over in Brookline. And what we learned from that, by chance, because we had open house that night and happened to be having Zooms. So to be able to talk to those parents who would be directly impacted via Zoom took the anxiety level down quite a bit. So that's become part of our practice now. And when we had our first case in Hollis, Paula invited all those parents to a Zoom to hear firsthand about what was going on, what are the precautions, what are the steps we're taking. So if we encounter another case, which is a high probability, we'll be doing the same type of procedure, whether it's at the co-op or back at one of our schools. As we alluded to during public input, both Candy and Paula are working with families who want to return or want to go remote. They'll be providing recommendations to the SAU. Decisions are based around really space, space and staffing. You know, and we're hoping to be on all requests. We're just not positive that'll be able to happen. Lunch procedures have been wonderful. It's another group of individuals that we need to commend. Because again, if you think of the traditional school model, all the kids would have walked through, got their tray, got their lunch, and sat here. Now, that same group of individuals package every single lunch. And they deliver those lunches to the classroom so the students are kept in their cohort. So just an amazing group of individuals as far as lunch is going. And at the same time, they're making sure that happens here. You still have our two stops in town, one in Brookline at RMS and one at the middle school for any family who's looking for lunches via remote learning. So those pickups are still occurring. So I have to commend Amy Cassidy. Jumping over to Hollis Special Ed for a second, I want to commend Bob because we have a date fast approaching early October where we needed to do all of our evaluation meetings and meet with families and talk about what happened educationally and how students are doing with regard to their goals and their objectives. And I'm very proud to say under Bob's leadership, working with Amy Rowe and Elster, those meetings go very, very well. They've all been done pretty much by Zoom to allow families that flexibility and just an outstanding job. So, sitting here tonight, only 18 days in, it seems like forever. I'll be honest. The day does seem a lot longer now. But it's all worth it when we get to see the kids. You know, when I get the, you know, the air high five and all the new things that I have to learn from the kids, it makes it all rewarding and all the time that we spent preparing for this. Now, we have a long way to go. You know, the district did flu shots the other day. The vast majority of our teachers participated in that. And we hope to be able to have more guidance as we head into the flu season. But that's going to be difficult because the symptoms do mirror each other. So we'll be, again, very conservative. We have been relying heavily on the strength of our nursing staff. For those who don't know in the community, we actually have eight nurses employed in the SAU. In many districts, you have one or two for the entire district. And it's one of those areas the community has always supported, and I think it's paying us great dividends. We have a floating nurse. And on the days where we encounter a case, that nurse automatically gets reassigned to that building to help alleviate the load. It's now turned out, because she's been at both buildings when it's occurred, that she is able to assist our nurses who maybe haven't been through the protocols with the Department of Health and Human Services. And they have been there and very good to deal with. It does take time because from the moment we call them to when they get back to us could be a matter of hours. And yet, we follow our protocols and move forward. One of the things that we encountered in our neighboring district was we now have the 15-minute tests. You can get it in Bedford or Nashua. But that 15-minute test means that we, as a school district, get information before Health and Human Services. So the upload to them is usually about 24 hours later. So when we're calling them, they're, what do you mean you have a case? We don't have a case for you. You know, but our nurses already gotten the paperwork. So it's just pieces of the system that are going to be very fluid and we'll adjust to. Just like we're adding Zoom, we'll make adjustments as we go. I do have to commend our parents. Number one, symptom monitoring is Paula or Candy put in their report. I mean, most mornings, we're down around 10 families. You know, that's outstanding. And when we make that call, it's simply, as we all remember, the chaotic house. You know, you're trying to get them dressed, ready to go, the lunches, all of that. So we understand it, you know, and we appreciate the parents taking those calls and working so closely with us. And then, all of our taxi drivers. You know, the parents are just phenomenal. They have allowed our buses to run because of the volume of carpooling that's occurring, whether it be a neighborhood carpool or the individual parent. And just remarkable. So this has truly been an effort of everyone together. And I can't state enough publicly how much Gina and Bob have done for us to make this a reality. You know, I know there'll be some questions later on tonight. And Bob has continued to make himself the expert on those. So when we have quizzes, I probably get an A. Bob probably gets a 100. And then he never lets you forget that he got the 100. That's the worst part of it.
Dragging right.
But I gladly take any questions on behalf of the principals. But I can share that they are excited. They love being back. They love seeing the kids.
Andy, are you allowed to comment on the health of the educator who... Is everyone okay?
Well, it's very difficult because of HIPAA and FOPA and everything. I can tell you that we continue to monitor every situation. And our nurses actively check in, whether it's a family or a staff member, to see how folks are doing.
Well, I hope everything's all right.
I would like to understand more about what the wait lists look like. And in addition to that, I have thoughts about certainly the families that have the ability and knowledge to be proactive and seek out the change, you know, looking to be put on a wait list, will be on the wait list. But they, I am concerned for families that their current situation might not be working for them but don't know to request.
Sure.
You know, it might be waiting to hear from the school to say, this is the time to request a change, that they may, you know, be waiting for that authority to be given to them. Because as this gentleman pointed out, there was some confusion with the communication of the flow in and out, so...
Sure. And I mean, I would just remind folks that part of the confusion...
If you speak a little, I can't hear you.
I would remind folks that part of the confusion and the communication was that we were working with our teachers to come to an agreement, working with our support staff to come to an agreement. So there's, you know, 15 balls in the air and you can't have a clear answer until you have all those pieces in place. But here we are. You had said you would like to know what that looks like. It looks like just a list of families that want to move. And so those have come to us...
No, no, I just mean like, yeah, numbers.
Yeah.
Data.
What's the breakout?
Four or five.
Four or five.
Per building. Some buildings are less than that. So not very many. And some of those have come to us because families have called. Some of those have come to us because our students who are in person, if they're not coming to school, just as we would any year, we're checking in with families, trying to understand if there's a reason why we're seeing truancy. We're also checking in with our remote learning students. Is there a reason why you're not checking in? I've noticed that you missed morning meeting, and we're following up. And sometimes it comes up that we're having technical difficulties. The schedule is difficult to maintain. And so we're working through those families to try to say, let me help you in this way, in that way. Maybe you'd like to try in person. So we're reaching out in both capacities, both, you know, receiving phone calls or email requests and also reaching out if we're seeing that something is not working. But, you know, have we put on a billboard, this is the day, please put your name on a waitlist? We haven't. And to be honest, I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to honor all the requests if we get much more because, or many more because, as we all discussed, the staffing levels and how to allocate our existing staff and how to accommodate the children in the classroom according to the safety standards that were approved by you guys as a board. So...
Yeah, but I think for me, I think it's important that parents know that October 9th is the day and that they're at least, that they at least realize that this is going to be a decision point, right?
So it has been in some of the newsletters. I can't guarantee it's been in all of the newsletters. But we have identified that as a kind of check-in date to see how things are going if a change needs to be made.
So...
Yeah, I just want to make sure people understand the process. And I would expect that there may be some families that don't understand the process and rely on the school to communicate that process.
Is this the only check-in date that we have? Or is there another?
There is not another one planned, but I would imagine we would take another look at our next natural break, which would be right before the Thanksgiving holiday. That Monday is a fully remote learning day as well, the Monday before Thanksgiving.
Yeah. So I'd like to open that up for a little discussion. So is there appetite on the board to have another check-in? Or do we want to provide direction?
I think we need to provide direction for October 9th because we did banter the checkpoint concept around a lot during the reopening discussions over summer. You know, I think we should let everybody who has a desire to change put their hat in the ring. And if you find that you have an entire class worth of students that are currently remote that want to come in building and that works with the staffing, then you can honor that, for instance. So I would rather know where people are at than have anybody wondering why they couldn't have tried for it, even if it can't be honored. I think we should be very clear that just because you're saying you want to do this doesn't necessarily mean it can happen because of those parameters that we have. But I think we should say, hey, everybody, make your declaration. Are you remote? You want to stay remote? Great. You're in person, you stay in? Great. And let them decide.
But this was a difficult decision that families had to make with very little knowledge, all of us, right? And it's very difficult for the administration. And we all, you know, stepped up to the plate and chose one or the other. And I'm echoing what you're saying. Absolutely.
So for the board members' consideration, what I would like to kind of put out there is structure some, what direction would look like. So what I'm hearing, and we can adjust it, but what I'm hearing is at our next meeting, we would like to get an update on what decisions were made on the October 9th, you know, petitions to change either in or out. What was the breakout? How many were changed? How many couldn't get changed? And I would like direction from this board if we want to provide direction for a second possibility of having another check... Well, I call them check-ins for parents to say, hey, our situation has changed.
Working, not working.
We need to go remote, or we would like to go, yeah.
So can we rewind from that, though? Because I think what we're dealing with right now is communication for parents to make a decision about October 9th, not just what we're told about it.
Yep.
So I don't think it's inappropriate to say, y'all just tell us what you want to do with your kids. Do you desire to keep them where they are or do you have a desire to change? And then you guys will know exactly how people feel. And all parents' voices can be heard for whichever way they feel about it, I guess. And then make the decisions that you can to honor or unfortunately not be able to honor certain requests. And then follow that up with what you're saying, Rob, where we would have an update at our next meeting. Which I don't see one on the board, obviously, for October because it's, you know, tomorrow.
It'll be our first week in November.
So it'll be the first week in November. And then at that point, we can say, all right, do we want to call Thanksgiving another checkpoint? Do we need to make that checkpoint decision tonight or can we say that on the 4th of November?
No, we can put it on for next business, next meeting's business.
That's my opinion. I say let people put their requests in, try to honor what you can. If we can be that flexible, great. And then get that update.
Amy?
Yeah, and I know I also think that we need to remind folks that there's a 14-day quarantine after travel outside of New England. I'm concerned with the long Columbus Day weekend. And then I'm also concerned about the weeks following Thanksgiving.
And Christmas.
Right. And so if we can ask, I don't know if we can ask folks for their plans, but if we have a lot of people traveling, that could really impact the number of remote sections that we have.
So as part of this communication, you want it to cover our 14-day quarantine for out-of-state travel?
Out of New England, out of New England travel.
New England.
Right, yep.
And you would like to see some sort of recognition that October 9th is the day, you know?
Yeah.
And Tammy?
I understand that we talked about October 9th as the first check-in balancing point because of the remote learning day that was scheduled, et cetera. I'm curious if we have to maintain a all-or-nothing calendar-like... Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm having a cough. Going forward after that, so for example, to Amy's point, if somebody decides to go away for Thanksgiving and now they're going to remote learn, I mean, quarantine for 14 days, and then Christmas or the holidays, our December holidays are just a couple of weeks later, it really throws a lot of, it scrambles a lot of plans.
Yeah, I mean, the piece of going away and quarantining and thinking that we can have remote classes, I don't think that's going to work. Meaning that if, so if you went away outside of New England and came back for 14 days, we can't, A, overload remote teachers, B, probably won't be able to shift somebody from in-person to remote. So we simply won't have the staffing to potentially meet those needs.
So that's segueing into a part of the conversation with the DRS stuff, yeah.
Part of the notification, but the communication, right?
Yeah.
That if you're going, if you're going out, don't, there's no expectation that you can.
Pop back in.
You can remotely learn if you were in class. We can't spike the remote classes, right?
So we can, but it wouldn't be, we have to supply an education to all taxpayers' children. So I'm so sorry about, I got, I just swallowed funny.
It's okay.
Well, Tammy's. So my point is that I'm trying to make is that if no student can be told, well, we can't educate you because you went out of town, you're on quarantine, and we don't have a remote learning teacher for you. It would scramble the system, but we still have to supply the best we possibly can. So to the points that say that has to be clarified for people as they make the travel plans, 100%. That really deserves to be reemphasized. What I guess I was trying to say before, I started choking, is that, so October 9th comes and, you know, certain individuals are on the waiting list, they get, they're moved, others move out of the classroom or whatever adjustments. And then someone changes their mind, or they have COVID or some other circumstance, and they leave the live classroom and want to go remote. The waiting list doesn't have to wait until post-Thanksgiving or post-December holidays. Could it be more fluid than that after the 9th? You see what I'm asking you?
Well, you can be probably put on the list at any time, but I don't think making the switch willy-nilly anytime is a good idea.
So some of the pieces that we've learned through our work with DHHS, given our cases, is that we really need to pay attention to our 48-hour look back. So if we start willy-nilly making switches.
Yeah, it scrambles.
It really complicates our very tight process. And we've been commended by DHHS on the protocols we have in place and our ability to stick with them and to provide information at a quick rate. So if we start just trying to accommodate everybody without really understanding that this is all about safety, health and safety of our students and staff. And I understand that there are some inconveniences or some desires to change, but it's a balancing act between trying to provide the wants, but absolutely providing the musts.
And I think you make a very important point there for having folks understand why there's these date check-ins. Because there's a whole other operational aspect to reporting our situation and things. And then being able to use that data to pivot if we really have to pivot to complete remote if we have a big spike or something. So we need to kind of balance that with needs. So for me, I don't see how we could just not, we have to work with these type of decades.
So what I was trying to spit out before is, if we had 100% of students want to remote learn, we can't just say, oh, we don't have the teachers for that within our expects. We have to provide it. We are legally required to provide an education to every student in this town. What we can't provide is floor space. We can't make the building bigger. We can't make classrooms bigger. We can't make this room bigger. So when you guys say we may not have the staffing, I understand that the pragmatics of that are very tight. But it's not that we can't find some way to get staff to teach students. It's that there, it can't, that the flexibility is physical.
Well, I would say right now, you can't find staff, period. That's one thing.
In other words, then you have to change the number of students per staff member. We'd have to provide an education. We can't say, I'm sorry, we can't provide you school.
No, we could do it, but the board may have to decide that the two weeks after Christmas is 100% remote.
I understand, no, I understand.
Quarantine everybody for those two weeks. But the problem would be, some people will view that two weeks as an opportunity to go back to wherever they just came from.
So I guess I was looking at the reverse of saying, we can't just have everyone come back into the building necessarily who wants to. It's the physical space that can't necessarily accommodate people.
Can I get a clarifying question? Do I recall that if you are required to quarantine because of COVID, that you are then eligible for the remote section? You are eligible. Stay with your teacher and you attend the remote section. Is travel not considered required quarantine because of COVID? Does that not fall under that category?
If the parent is choosing to travel?
Well, the DHHS guidelines are if the student has traveled outside New England. I don't know that a, you know, of course, that's going to really be at the direction of the parent. But I have, it was the same question I had, is we did say that that would be, if in that case, they would, they could appear in the learning Zoom portions of the remote classes. So it's not going back and forth, but we did say that that was, that was part of it if we're following those DHHS guidelines. But if we're going to have, you know, 45 people be like, oh, well, if my kid can do that, because we feel like going on vacation, I don't know how I feel about that, but we have to.
That's how it's currently written, or that's what I'm trying to understand, interpretation of.
Any request for remote instruction for a child who has been exposed to COVID, has had to quarantine for 14 days and is still able to participate in instruction, will go through the building administrator. If the request is approved, because we can't have 90 students all of a sudden, even though, as the agreement was, the students would be in the Zoom of the remote teacher, stay rostered with the in-person teacher, and then we'd be able to set up three 20-minute sessions of one-on-one with their classroom teacher. If we're trying to set up for 14 students, three times a week, 20-minute sessions, and you have a Zoom of 90 second graders, that's just not going to work. So, you know, we would have to make some tough decisions about what would be approved. Because we are limited with staffing. Because that, those in-person teachers would still have a commitment to the two kids left who didn't travel.
But Gina, if nine of the kids go traveling and come back on an elective decision, right, that they decide to take vacation or whatever, and they come back and they have to quarantine by law, we can't not provide them an education.
We could provide them with Google Classroom. What I'm saying is it's not, it's never as black and white as what we would like it to be. The best of plans have exceptions and nuances. And yes, Tammy, if 100% of the students went remote, we would be able to provide that instruction. But it's when two-thirds of the class are remote, and I still have a duty for the one-third that's in-person.
I understand.
I can't rearrange those students because I have seating charts, you know, that I have to send to DHHS, and I have.
I completely understand.
All of that, and then all of a sudden, the burden is on the remote teacher. So in trying to sort of satisfy everybody's level of comfort, desire, need for health reasons, it's quite the puzzle. And we have to take it day by day, case by case, as difficult as that is. And I just want to remind folks that from the very beginning, although we didn't say October 9th, I said this so many times, it was like a recording. A conversation with the administrator would have to take place in order to change the enrollment status. Because even when we didn't have it fully out there for everyone to understand the numbers and the breakdown, what I did understand is that we couldn't go back and forth easily because there was a staffing issue, there were seating chart issues. There are just a number of things that you don't think of when you're not, you know, running the minute-to-minute. And that's, we're operating minute-to-minute, you know, trying to move us forward.
I just feel like the points that have been made tonight in all cases make it very clear that we cannot offer utter flexibility to, under any circumstance, into the building or out of the building, that it's very, very tough choices have to be made because the situation is very finely balanced.
The pieces that I would suggest is, we will communicate via the principal's newsletters about October 9th, get that out, remind folks, and literally, it's four or five in each building now. I mean, it's only, we talked to the middle school and high school today, it's six in each of those buildings. It's not a lot of people looking to switch. We will start to advise families about the travel restriction. And then we can look at all this November 7th. Because to me, I'm just trying to get to October 1st. You know, I'm being lost.
Tomorrow, Andy, we're almost there.
Exactly. I wasn't sure we would get there, but we're going to make it, all right? And then we'll also know more because we may see tightening of travel restrictions. We may see loosening. I don't know where the country's going to go during this piece. But at any point, the easiest solution for us, not a popular solution, is to go 100% remote. And we may have a discussion about that just because we enter flu season. It might be the safest way to deal with educating kids, period. Now, the problem is trying to identify when flu season is. My colleague in Conval, they're doing the whole month of December via remote and coming back after the New Year. Now traditionally, since I've been here, our worst flu outbreak and sickness is always in February. We struggle to make it to February break on a normal year with the number of kids getting sick. So we're going to be talking at the November meeting about what a second semester is going to look like for days. So we can discuss Christmas, we can discuss after New Year, we can look at putting on an extra time period in February, you know? Like, when I look at that, I wouldn't recommend the week before our vacation because that's Massachusetts. And that just potentially leads to more transferring. But the first week in March, there's no school district that has an official vacation. You know, and for us, it wouldn't be a vacation, it would just be 100% remote. So I think what you're hearing from the administration is we're happy to look in at check-ins and check-outs, but just not sure what the reality is. And to Tammy's point, in some districts, educating children is putting papers in bags. And that's what students are doing. We're chosen to do either in-person or remote, and those are the two options we'd like to stay with as much as we can.
So I would just say, let's, I'm sure you're going to do this anyway, but let's also make sure that as part of that notification, we're making no guarantees that we can accommodate everyone as part of the clear communication. Get your requests in, we will do what we can and then get back to you.
Yeah.
So under new business then for November, why don't we go ahead and make sure we're putting a discussion around another check-in date possibly for remote or in-class or whatever? We'll save that for November. And as part of the new business, let's hear an update on what was the outcome of the October 9th check-in? What could we do? What are the numbers? What are the splits and all that? Sounds good?
I have one other DHHS kind of guideline touch-on thing. So part of the conversations that we had over the summer when talking about reopening and following the DHHS guidelines, I've heard a lot of commentary that they don't seem to necessarily go all the way that they could have, should have, and people's opinions maybe not as common sense and protective. So I know that we have to follow those. But I want to know why, not why, but it wouldn't be inappropriate for us as a board to say, okay, we're going to expand on those a little bit and add some more clarification. And I'm specifically talking about siblings of quarantined individuals. And this is something that I think I brought up, we talked about the six degrees of Kevin Bacon, remember? So I know that we have a quarantine situation at HPS right now with an entire class. There are parents who have students in that class, who also have siblings in other classes, and they're concerned about what is the exposure point if they continue to send those siblings to school? What, can we talk about this for a minute? Why would we not allow a parent of a quarantined student to say, listen, I don't necessarily feel comfortable because of that risk level for my siblings to go to school? What would be the impetus or anything to let them do a remote then, the sibling? Or to refuse them remote and then it's an absence for that period of time as well?
Well, and I think part of it comes down to, the students in both of the cases that we had has been more precautionary. You know, one of the terms that Health and Human Services currently started using is this idea of close contact versus exposure. They're two very different things. We do not have evidence to suggest that our students were exposed. There may have been close contact. So it really is a precautionary measure for their quarantine. Had there been true exposure, the recommendation from Department of Health and Human Services may have been different, that the siblings of those exposed, because that is a recommendation of DHHS, if you are, you know, if you come into contact with someone who's been exposed. So part of the rationale for us allowing the siblings to return is that was the recommendation of Health and Human Services because the quarantine is really cautionary.
That being said, families have asked, well, what about my sixth grader? What about my eighth grader?
Right.
And we have said, we are not asking you to quarantine. However, if you feel more comfortable, you can, as a family, make that decision. So.
But then the kids can't remote learn.
We have allowed them to remote learn.
Middle and high school, it's easier because they room in Zoom.
Right.
But we have allowed them.
I'm talking about in Hollis.
Currently, we have allowed them to remote learn if they made that choice. And.
So you're saying a sibling can remote learn even within our own district? You mentioned the high school, the co-op schools. But so you have a second grader and a fifth grader, and the second grader is quarantined out and the fifth grader family wants to keep home also. And so you're allowing them to.
We have, I mean, you know, I think there might be a tipping point. But in our two cases, we had conversations with any families who were concerned or confused or asked the question. And we said, we are not asking you to quarantine, you know, the siblings. However, if you, as a family, feel safer doing so, we will honor your request for that quarantine and they will have access to remote learning.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
That's good to know. I was hearing some community feedback that wasn't saying that same thing. So I'm glad to hear that from you. And I'm glad to hear that the DHHS mentioned siblings because that wasn't part of our DHHS section that we added to the reopening plan. So I'm glad to hear that that's, to that extent now, that there was community concern on that as well.
Yeah, and the only difference would be is if you were someone who was in close contact and you had symptoms, then your sibling would need to quarantine. But we have not been provided with information that that's the case.
Gotcha, cool. Thanks, guys.
Just understand too, that the nurses is our contact person. And when our nurse gets notified, the first thing they do is go into Polis School and check for the siblings. And then they contact the nurses at those, let's say, two buildings. So everybody's aware, and then it's just a matter of everybody's waiting to see the information that we get back from DHHS.
Good. Thank you for that, guys.
Okay, so based on the, are you comfortable with the direction? Is it doable?
Yeah, no, I think it's very doable. I think the 9th is no problem whatsoever. I think naturally that Thanksgiving break is the next natural break. We happen to have a meeting the 7th. We can give you data and more feedback of what's going on for the month of October.
Okay.
You know, and we'll go from there.
Very good.
I will point out that UNH is sending all of its students home at Thanksgiving break permanently.
Right.
For the remainder of the semester.
Till after Christmas.
So till after the winter holidays, yeah. So, well, actually, through January.
Given the holiday proximity, it kind of makes sense.
The last week of January, they tend to go.
Oh, yeah, well, they're always off till the middle.
Yeah.
Right, so my point is though, that there's this whole vector thing that's going to happen at Thanksgiving.
So I'd like to, with that, I think we beat this up pretty good. I'd like to move on to the discussion section of the agenda, FY22 budget overview.
Yes, I just wanted to give the board, first of all, I gave each member of the board the SAU Graph 3B. For those who are in the community or don't realize it, we have a budget subcommittee that represents the communities of Hollis and Brookline, their budget committees, their school boards. And they work together with the SAU staff to craft the budget. One of the pieces about the SAU budget is the same thing you're going to hear about in the Hollis budget, so we'll cover it at the same time. Number one is that the guaranteed maximum rate for insurance and dental is right now being set at 10.9% increase. It ranges from about a low of three across the state to a high of just under 20. The, this is the second, the first year of the new biennium will be FY22. What that means for budgets is we get new New Hampshire retirement numbers. So the employee group, which means all of us who are non-teachers, which from an SAU. point of view, that's everybody but Kelly Sealy. For whatever reason, the business manager is always considered a teacher from a retirement standpoint, is going from 11.17% to 14.08%. To give you kind of just a guesstimate on the impact, in the SAU budget that I passed out to you, our 16 employees at the SAU, just those 16 individuals, will increase by $55,262. So, you're going to see that same type of impact with the Hollis teachers in the retirement line, as well as the insurance line. I also met last week, and I chaired with the board last year, the town of Hollis was going for a grant to fund a portion of a community resource officer, so similar to a SRO but slightly different duties. They will be putting on the warrant article on the town side because they have received notice that they have, will receive funding if the town approves it. I've been meeting with Chief Abeki, and we will be doing a, what I would call, the split because just with our present SRO, right now, he's allocated 80% of the co-op, 20% in Hollis. Now, that 20% is going to go away, but there's going to be a new cost coming in to the Hollis budget to represent the community resource officer. We're presently looking at about a 60-40 split. So, those are three pieces that will impact the budget. We really do not have any other new staffing requests from Paula or Candy. And we have done two rounds there, and we'll be bringing the Hollis budget to the November meeting to spend time going through it. But as you can see from the SAU budget, the limit really comes under the benefits column, which there's really no way around the mandated cost contractually. So, you're looking at that, let me just find the...
133. Are you looking for the retirement?
Well, I was just going to say, the increase in health insurance will be $18,826, and dental will be $1,850. And again, the retirement will go up $55,262. So, right now, on the SAU budget, and why it's important we do the SAU first for community members, the SAU budget is allocated into the three budgets. So, this is apportioned to Brookline, to Hollis, and to the co-op. So, this budget is always done first. It goes to the SAU board this month, and then it's actually voted on in December, so we have the concrete numbers to transfer into what would be the Hollis, the Brookline, and the co-op piece. But when you look at that number, that makes up the bulk of our increase. So, there really isn't much in the way of, I'll call it, fluff. We were, as Amy knows, at our last meeting, we were at 10.9%, and that was before health insurance came in. Once that came in, we, as we joked at the meeting, it meant it was time to shop in the pencils again. So, what we have done, and see what the SAU board's decision will be, is we've looked at adjustments to salaries and things that we can control.
So, at this point, we're 7.2% above next year, or last year?
That's correct.
Okay.
And about 6% of that is your benefits increase.
Okay.
Yep.
As part of that GMI?
The GMI and...
GMI, sorry.
Yeah, and New Hampshire retirement.
Okay.
It's the, New Hampshire retirement's the biggest hit. It's over $40,000.
And when are we meeting as a SAU board?
We are tentatively scheduled for the 15th. Dawn is going to be sending out the meeting reminder.
October?
Yeah.
Okay.
The meeting reminder to the SAU board the next day or two.
And we'll be taking up this work?
That's correct.
Okay.
And Tammy, for those of you who don't know, is also, serves on this board, but is the SAU treasurer this year, so she'll be presenting the budget. And then Amy serves as the Hollis rep from the school board, and Mike Harris is the rep from the Hollis Budget Committee, who has been attending the meetings as well.
I'd like to point out, there's a line, where did it go? I just saw it. Line 22, Treasurer's Stipend, that's not me. The SAU has a formal treasurer. That's an administrative position, and they get the stipend. I'm a board member, just like you, and...
Are you suggesting we add a line for you?
I wouldn't, I didn't...
What are you driving at here?
Well, I'd likely pay with the select when they're paid, so $7,000 would be...
Yeah, it would be, yeah, right. Okay, so, we will get another at bat as a, at the SAU board, so maybe we, if you don't mind, if there's no pressing conversations, we can get further in our agenda tonight. All right. With that, I'd like to move on to the diversity, equity, and inclusion update. So, we received some really good input, public input this evening. So, Andy, why don't you kind of prime the pump for the conversation?
Yeah, I'd like to give you kind of a framework, and I would like to thank Tiffany and Marie because they have both volunteered to serve in the committee. And we have on that committee, which will be for diversity, equity, and inclusion, Kylie Rasku, Rudy Ramos, Andrew Scott, Gerald Smith, David Werner, Tiffany Testa, Katie Conan, and Diane Masalini. These individuals will be working with me, and we have a series of tasks, and I'm going to explain those tasks. And we will be regularly coming back to the board to provide you with updates and asking at times for your support and your vote on certain topics. The goal of the committee, or our role, is to begin the process of discussing our strategic objectives to diversity, equity, and inclusion for all students. I've done a lot of reading recently, and I've talked with Tiffany and Marie, and I came across a gentleman, Dr. Robert Sellers. He is, does the diversity and equity at the University of Michigan. And I was really looking at this from a standpoint of, part of my role is to convey messages to kids. And my students range from three years old to 12th grade. So, he had a very interesting piece, and he related diversity, equity, and inclusion to dance. And I wasn't sure, you know, I read about it, but, you know, didn't know if I was going to like it or not like it. And then I was walking down the corridor to Hollis Primary School. And as I'm walking down the corridor, I can hear a PE teacher. And he is playing the tambourine, and this is going, and I can hear kids giggling. And now, I'm actually getting upset because we're not supposed to be having PE inside. That's my role. But I get to the gym doors, and there he is doing virtual PE, and he's dancing around, and his audience that particular day was some of our youngest learners. And every one of those children knew what dance meant. So, it gave me a concept that would allow me to talk to them, and I think all of our older students understand the concept. And what he says is diversity is everyone is invited to the party. So, we want every student in our school district to feel that they're included and invited to participating. Equity is everybody contributes to the playlist. And that kind of hit home because we all have different tastes in music, and we all want to listen to different things. And if you think of, when I grew up, you know, there was only like one radio, and everybody had to agree what we were going to listen to or watch. I mean, in my house, I was still the child that had to get up and turn the TV channel because the clicker didn't exist yet. So, this is an opportunity where everybody that's going to be a student for us gets to discuss the playlist. What's important to them? Why is it important to them? And at some point, everybody should be included in that playlist. And then, the inclusion part is everybody has the opportunity to dance. Every one of our students should feel confident and comfortable to do something that for some people is uncomfortable, dancing, you know? So, that's kind of my framework when I'm looking at working with the students. Not the same framework that we're going to have as a committee, but I've got to convey these messages to young individuals. Two programs that the SAU is already involved in is the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning known as CASL. Gina started working with that group a couple of years back as we brought social emotional learning to the district and started to ramp up what we were doing. The other one is a program that Bob brought to the district, which is known as Choose Love. And both of those programs focus on social emotional learning, and Choose Love now has, I'll call it, a piece of their program that starts to discuss equity, inclusion, and diversity. From a teacher's standpoint, we wanted to have two known components that they have used. Because from an SAU standpoint, we didn't want to hear, this is just one more thing on our plate, one more new item. This isn't new. Social emotional is not new. What we need to do with students in terms of talking about relationships, that's our industry. That's what we do every day. So, our future efforts will also be focused on, especially for our upper-level kids, what I refer to as courageous conversations. We need, at the co-op, we're discussing, what does a portrait of a cavalier look like? In other words, what does somebody look like after they graduate from our school system? And one of the pieces that we want to emphasize is that we believe our students should be able to have courageous conversations. We should be able to sit in a class and have a difficult conversation about a difficult topic so that as we move out into the wider society, we can have those type of conversations. And, you know, we see that in some instances, that's one of the things that we lack. Some of us as adults are struggling with those courageous conversations. And we have to be willing to stand up and talk about what we believe in, but at the same time, respect what the other person is saying. So, from a kind of definition point of view, a courageous conversation is any conversation when participants commit to engage each other with honesty, open-mindedness, and to listen deeply to better understand each other's perspectives, and to sustain the conversation if it gets uncomfortable or sidetracked. And when I look at a graduate of Hollis Brookline, that's a skill I would like to see them take off to college. Because college is a difficult environment, and all of a sudden, for many of our students, you become your own advocate. Mom and dad aren't there, you know? Yes, they're only a phone call away, but would like to teach our kids this skill set to bring onto that campus or into the workforce. So, the committee's purpose, and again, this has not been vetted to the committee. We were hoping to meet tomorrow night, and anytime you try to get eight adult schedules to match, it doesn't necessarily work. But we believe we're looking at next Thursday night now seems to be the date. So, what we're going to look at is to represent the diverse perspectives of our students and communities that make up SAU 41. And I think we have that on the committee. We are going to create a DEI statement for board review. So, we're going to take the work of the resolution and look at it in terms of SAU 41. How do we want that phrase? What do we want it to look like? And that will be coming back to the board at some point for your vote. We also want to make that approved statement in some way, shape, or form, an objective or a goal in our strategic plan. Because this can't be about this current administration or this current school board. If we put it in the strategic plan, then it's something that is broadly publicized to the community, and it says this is what we believe in. Now, other school boards could change that, other superintendents could decide to do something different, but it would have to take a discussion, and that's what we think is important. The committee would serve as a future resource to ensure future alignments. We don't see this as a one-hit wonder. You know, we're not going to come in with three hours of PD, and everybody says they attended something, and we're done. No, this is, this is very much more, how do we do this K to 12, and how do we do it and sustain it? We would also inform the communities and staff via forums, the strategic plan, professional development, about the evolving role of the group and the next steps. So, it's a group intent to go out as we get pieces of our work completed and get public input. Allow feedback. Put time on our agendas here to go through them. Some initial activities. Again, that resolution will create what I'll call a baseline understanding of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Right? And that means race, color, creed, gender, orientation, whatever it is. Because we're talking about students, we represent them all, so we have to be as open and inclusive as we can be to represent all of them. We'll, again, conduct the information sessions to gather input from the community. We'll identify, and this is a critical piece, we'd like to identify DEI measures that are already in place. What do we have that we already do, and I'd like it by grade level? So, we can kind of start to see, if we're saying, this is what we want a 12th grader to look like, well, I'm a big fan of the backwards by design. I know where I want to get to, what do I have to build in in order to get there? So, we'll be spending time with our principals, working with our teachers to find out what they're doing. We have some remarkable things that occur. What we want to do is become more intentional with those curriculum pieces. And we're not looking to change our curriculum, we're already doing it. We just want to make sure that we are allowing students to understand we're having a courageous conversation and how we're intentionally doing this to develop their skill set. And then, we'll review Choose Love and the CASL program to see where they have access points. Now, where can we already have something going on that we can expand? Because as you can imagine, there's a lot going on for teachers right now. So, part of this is to give them the framework that they need, then give them the professional development while balancing that with this once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully, virus. We have a remarkable group of individuals who have volunteered. We have other community members who are not serving on the advisory committee, but are willing to help with the public forums. We have some experts in the community that teach at the college level, that have been doing this work for many, many years, and they are willing to help us and talk to us about curriculum-type of initiatives and things that they have done. And then, we all have colleagues that are undergoing similar work at different places. So, it's exciting. I want to thank Tiffany because selfishly, I asked her to kind of co-facilitate because I just don't know if something comes up. If I can't be there, I don't want this to be, it stops.
Right.
So, she has been gracious enough to give her time to help us move this forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding what I've discussed. I would say that is in draft form with a big, huge D, but I just wanted the boards to have an understanding, and I've talked to the co-op board, the Brookline board, and now the Hollis board with our committee about to start meeting.
So, for me, it sounds like there's two work products here that this committee is going to bring forward. It sounds like there's a resolution draft, and would, is this going to be entered as a foundation to that committee?
That is going to be brought to the committee, and the committee will, I don't want to say start from square one, but the committee will look at that...
They could choose to use this as the base document, and then maybe modify it, change it, add to it, attract to it.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, like, one of the things, when I look at that document, what I'd like to add is, SAU already has a current mission statement, and it kind of goes along with that. So, I would probably suggest to the committee, we look at adding our SAU mission statement, even if that means we need to look at the mission statement again.
And I would, I look at this and I say, the references to SAU 41, I think, needs to, at least for the districts, need to be, call out the Hollis School District or the Brookline School District. Because the SAU 41 is kind of this overarching, you know, structure that kind of guides the offices over at the... Because the SAU 41 is kind of this overarching, you know, structure that kind of guides the offices over at the SAU building. In order, for me, I think in order for the districts to take real ownership, it's got, the resolution has got to call out that district who's adopting it. So that's one thing. I actually think this is a great, you know, I looked at, I've been thinking about this since we saw this, and I think it was last June. I think this is a really nice advancement of that document. I think this is something that we can move forward with. And in some regards, I don't, there's not a lot I see that, that I see problematic at all. So I, for me, the other piece of this committee, and correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, is that there's a bigger or larger body of work that's about the strategic plan and how we build actionable things into the strategic plan. Because without that, this doesn't have a whole lot of meaning. It's just nice thoughts on a piece of paper. So I guess my concern is about timelines. How long is this committee going to need to be able to produce a simple resolution that we can at least get behind, maybe adopt, and then allow them to continue the work using this as their compass to build in those strategic things? I see that's going to take more time, more information gathering, and that could take months. But I see a simple document like this could be produced, that committee should be able to produce something fairly quickly for us to get at. That's one of the things I'm thinking about.
I don't disagree with you. I think for me personally, it's just a matter of letting the committee hash that out. Because I think in some ways, that can help provide us direction. So I, I think at next week's meeting, that will be a piece that we will be working on. And then the committee will decide how they want to approach it. We may decide to start to break into subgroups and do work. Because again, we do want to get information from teachers, we want to get information from eventually students, and have some conversations with them.
And I would just add that.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, Gina.
As Andy mentioned, we started to work on a portrait of a cavalier right before the pandemic. And so we held some committee meetings, Amy was on the committee, and we met during the quarantine time. And we got really far, and we have a couple of final drafts, and we just haven't, we have met in a little bit because there was something missing. And there was like that one piece that just wasn't quite there. Like, I didn't feel like it really represented the graduate, the cavalier that we wanted. And the idea was we were going to have this portrait of a cavalier. And then the next step was, take a look at the strategic plan in place and do those goals get us to this point? And if not, what are we missing? So I think it's the perfect time to add, whether it's courageous, like, here's our draft, whether it's courageous conversations as another pillar for what our portrait of a cavalier walks away with. Or I'm not sure what the language is, but I think it's perfect timing to slide into this and then do that critical analysis of our strategic plan and what do we need to draft to ensure that we're achieving this?
Yeah. Okay. So I would like our board to own this initiative. I don't want, I want us to take action on this, and I would like to see the committee do additional work. But I think this belongs to us at this point. So I'd like to discuss the initiative more amongst our board. I also want to acknowledge that two of the members appointed to the advisory committee spoke at our meeting against the resolution. And so I need that to be clear, that there are people that, on this committee, that are publicly against the DEI work. And maybe Andy can speak a little more to how that.
Yeah, I would just like to add a little clarification, though. Because that was, those remarks were based on a draft of June. This document is quite different than that. So I don't want to maybe call out people who are good intentioned to work on a committee that may have spoke critically about a draft that is very different in my mind than what we're, what we have and what we heard. And I thought that was great that we had input that actually read it, we read it twice into the, into the, into the record, basically. And I think it was important that not only did we get it from correspondence, from the superintendent, but we had a community member also enter it.
Okay.
And I think that's important.
I'm just asking Superintendent Corey to address, because I've asked this at other meetings as well, about the decision-making matrix, whether it was based on public opinions or if it was based on credentials for the work, how the membership was chosen for the committee.
Well, in many cases, the person indicated interest and passion. I didn't look at necessarily whether they were on one side or the other, because there are two people sitting with here tonight that are on the committee that assisted with the sponsorship of the resolution. And there are two people on the committee that stood up and were opposed to some of the language there. I actually think that's a good thing, because I'm trying to represent both communities and all viewpoints. So I'm not saying that we're going to have these easy meetings. I think we have some work ahead of us, but I think the end product will be very beneficial for the communities and ultimately our students.
Could you clarify both communities and all viewpoints, please?
Hollis and Brookline.
The two communities are Hollis and Brookline, so we pretty much have relatively equal membership there. And the viewpoints were those concerned with the language in the first draft, as Rob talked about, which there were a number of people. Those who support the concept of DEI. And those who thought the wording of the first draft was maybe palatable, which some people didn't. And I think we have yet to even have a committee discussion. And we're in some ways making assumptions about how people are going to go. I've done many difficult committees. And I think this committee ultimately will arrive at something that this board can support. And I think ultimately, it will assist us with our communities as we move forward to support our children.
Okay, one more thing. Deo, Deo, that was the consultant that you spoke with, did he provide any concrete? Sorry, losing my train of thought. Did he, did he provide you a quote that could be shared with this board on consultation work?
Yes, I believe I had already talked about it, and I'm going to use it.
You did.
Right around $20,000 for the initial work and about $140,000 for the year.
Is there like a document that could be shared with us? Just to understand.
I'm happy to.
Okay, great, thank you. I'd be interested to see it.
That's fine.
Any other question?
Can I ask for clarification from, I guess, we're bringing forth this resolution, we're having community committee look at it. You're saying action, what action are you proposing? Like, what, what is it that, I guess, that you would want out of the board tonight?
I would like the board to wordsmith the document for ourselves. And consider adopting the resolution that we have here with our own wordsmithing without sending it to the committee and to allow the committee to advise, to get further along in the, in the work of DEI beyond the resolution. I think that the resolution should be ahead of that committee work.
And Rob, we talked about this, I think, at a couple of meetings ago, but we've obviously had a bunch of meetings in between that were more focused on reopening. What is the consequence, I guess is the word, of adopting a resolution? What does that look like again? Can you recap that for us, please?
Well, a resolution isn't like a policy, right? It can be handled like a policy, but it doesn't have the power of a policy, right? A resolution is just a public statement that says, these are our beliefs, and this is what we stand for. And those beliefs could translate into policy or strategic work or something like that. So this is, it's more of a public statement establishing where we stand. What, you know, why are we all sitting here as board members? What, what, what are we trying to do here? As it relates to DEI, right? So there's nothing, there's not, the way I would see it is, I've kind of pointed this out before, and I also got direction, well, input from the Hollis, from the New Hampshire School Board Association, legal, that they said and recommended and kind of reaffirmed what I had initially put out there, is that you treat it like a policy. You put it through readings, first reading, second reading. And during that, that process, we're, as a board, getting input as to what, maybe the verbiage or whatever is the content of the resolution. And then when we get it to a certain point, and the, and the board feels like they're at a point where they can adopt, they can choose to waive further readings or take it to all three readings and then finally adopt, and then boom, you've got a resolution. So there's very little things that are, that would block that process other than does it short-circuit some of the work the committees might be doing? So, but regardless, the board can deem that, that they want a resolution sooner rather than later. And by the way, if we also like the resolution that's coming, maybe we decide to move to that resolution at some date forward. I don't, you know, it's really up to the board and what the board wants to do. It's the board owns it. At the end of the day, when we adopt it, it's ours. So.
I'd like to add that a policy, for a board to pass a policy, there's plenty of law surrounding what that means. There's nothing around the term resolution that I'm aware of. So if we were to pass the same exact language as a policy, there are requirements as to readings. There are requirements as to how that plays out through our contractual obligations with our staff, through et cetera. There's no legal, as far as I'm aware, language that binds us on anything with respect to a resolution. So I think if you look at it backwards, even if you used exactly the same language, if you call it policy, there's every kind of hoop that you have to jump through and every kind of legal binding, there's lawsuits potential, et cetera, et cetera. Where a resolution, I don't think there's a body of law.
There's no.
That either restricts us or obligates us or flees us.
I take it as that, that this board, if we were to adopt a resolution, would be communicating to our Hollis community and our administration that we are, that this board is prioritizing this work. And that's as far as it would go, the board that is here currently.
My, I guess, concern would be that if one board adopts something and Brookline and the co-op don't agree, then we're not achieving the goal of students. And if, if, if this board was going to choose to wordsmith it, then what I would recommend is you need to get members of Brookline and the co-op, because otherwise you could end up with three different statements that would be a concern. Because I'm only looking at.
That's why we tried, I, you know, we originally brought it to the governing board meeting, but then we were told that wasn't really the appropriate channels for it, so.
Well, Andy, to your point, may I interrupt you, Andy, just a moment? I have, the one, the comment that I'd really like to make is that I have enormous concern that five white people are sitting here, please no offense to anyone who else of color or any other person who's, for whom this would be a more important, relevant, direct context, are deciding to write this without input from parties who would have a more direct and authentic experience and input. I have a huge problem with there not being any board members on this committee. That's all I have to say about it. I will vote against anything that doesn't have, some board member from somewhere to hear authentic voices authentically speaking to this.
You're talking about the superintendent's committee on DEI.
I don't see how we are talking about equity and here are the five of us, white privilege, thinking we know best what should be in this resolution. Much as I very much appreciate Dr. Ramos's input, as authentic as it can get, even so, I, this is, this is, makes a mockery of the whole purpose of this, which is to get authentic input from stakeholders who are subject to the very problems we're trying to solve. And we're deciding what they need their language to be without actually having their input put into it. And we're deciding that we know best, which I find appalling. And we're deciding that, to Brooke's point, to anyone's point, that the superintendent, who I have the greatest respect for, gets to represent the work of the committee to us without us hearing from those authentic voices. This is the most important thing we do, is serve human beings, every single one. You know, the most vilified academic program on the planet was No Child Left Behind. The misfortune of that is that the title of it is exceptional. No child should be left behind. No staff member, frankly, we never speak about that, okay? And I don't see how anyone can insist, and Brooke, honest to God, the greatest respect for you, that we sign on something that has not had input from the authentic affected individuals in our community, as few of them as there happen to be.
Brooke, I think, I think, Brooke, were you going to say something? Sorry.
No, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, I believe this was written by the very people you're referring to.
It hasn't been through a process that authenticates.
It was brought forth by a community group made up of several people you're mentioning here, and they sit on the committee that are looking at it.
I understand that, but this is, this is a municipal agency. This is not a, a community group. This is a school district with, I don't mean your committee, I mean the Hollis School District. We have legal obligations that supersede any nice language, good language. The process is critical to making something that's actionable, that is armored against incursions from actors who would want to undermine it, to harm it. I just don't see how we could sit here and adopt this without significant process that, 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 not gold plates it, but that authenticates it in the most legal possible fashion, the most.
So what are you proposing?
I'm proposing that we allow the process to continue as proposed.
What is the process?
What is the process? That's what I'm trying to define.
There's a whole committee process that's been discussed, but I take great issue at who's on the committee.
Okay, that's the, yes.
Not the individuals that you're concerned about, although I wonder. I don't disagree with you that it's a question, but to Andy's point, I don't like to read people's minds because I'm not good at that. But I don't understand how this committee can be, cannot have a single board member on it.
So are you asking Andy Corey to ask a board member from each of the three districts to join the committee?
I'm asking Robert Mann, chairman of the Hollis School Board, to impose a conversation on this topic.
If, just so you know, you can do whatever you'd like as a board, but if you change it to a school board committee, then we have to post all the meetings, which I'm not opposed to. We have to do minutes for all the meetings, which I'm not opposed to. But the goal was to try to take a group and bring it back to the board. Now, I can assure you, I don't need to speak. The committee I have chosen are more than willing to speak. So if you want to hear from them, I'd be happy to sit here and not talk at all.
I'm happy to talk.
So I just, and again.
There's other questions of me as a member of the committee.
I'm not interested in your opinion, Tiffany, because it's not a matter of opinions. This is a matter of formal, legal process that holds the community to. This is a matter of formal legal process that holds the community to the obligations that come out of the work.
Tammy, a resolution, I, I understand a resolution. I'm also on board and I've also given a resolution with my board. So a resolution is just a statement from the board.
So, so.
I'm not going to argue, first of all, we're not having an argument with, a debate with the public.
Well, I don't, yeah, what we want to do is, so.
Also, it doesn't have to be a committee of the board to have board members participate in the committee, does it?
But you said that you wanted to Rob to decide.
Yeah, I can't, I can't impose any.
And if Rob makes a school board committee, then.
That's my job.
No, 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 stop, stop. No, no. The Hollis School District is owned and operated by the board of, by the school board.
Yes.
So if there's going to be a discussion on any topic, any subject matter, it's through the chair, not through the administration. That's why I'm addressing myself to Rob. No disrespect to Andy whatsoever. So I'm just saying that if we are talking about adopting language for any purpose, whether it's to telegraph the intent of these five people or whether it's to write policy and make it something that's irrespective of who's sitting in these seats, which is a, I consider that a vast difference between, just as a lay interpretation, between resolution and policy. So then, you know, I want this to be a rock that can't be moved. And it needs to be so legally binding that the community would have to, somebody would have to move hell or water to change it.
Well, hold on, resolutions are not binding at all.
I understand that, I understand that.
Policies are kind of like a, a law, right? That we write.
Right.
And we follow.
Right.
Now, we can waive policies when we have to under certain circumstances. But for the most part, in order not to follow a policy, we have to have a public discussion and discuss as to why. The, the resolution is a statement, that's it. Do not make this mistake of mixing policy, resolution, resolution and policy. They are vastly different.
I couldn't agree more. However.
So I, I do, I am sympathetic to your points here about following the process, that there needs to be a process. We need to allow some of the work of the committee to happen. So what, what if we asked the committee to please, when, and they haven't even met yet, but maybe the first work that they need to take up is their meeting schedule. Decide what your meeting schedule is. Make sure you're sharing what that is to the public. So, so board members and other community members can come and sit and listen to the work that you're doing, possibly provide input, I don't know. But I'm, I'm, you know, I'm kind of.
So, so this committee is not a committee of the Hollis School Board. This committee is a committee of the superintendent.
Yeah.
It doesn't, I don't see how that has any obligations for public posting, et cetera. I don't see how a board member, and that doesn't have to be a Hollis School Board board member. I want somebody who represents the obligations under oath type of thing, you know, to hear the discussion. And it has nothing to do with trusting or not trusting administration members. It has nothing to do with that. We're talking about work that, we're sitting here like Easter Island heads, listening to whoever decides to speak. Some people decided not to. I don't know what their opinions are. I don't, I don't, I don't feel like this topic can be handled this way. It feels loose and it feels, it feels susceptible to intervention by people who would like to handicap it. I've been at this game a long time, not as long as Rob by any means, and I have seen how when things are not handled in a procedurally sound fashion, you can have the whole thing undermined by astute individuals who use process against the intended purpose. This is too important to have it undermined, in my humble opinion.
So are you proposing that you're asking Andy to make this an actual school board-directed committee?
Nope.
So you can have it be policyed and things like that?
Nope, not at all.
Then what are, what are? I'm not, I'm unclear, I, I get that you want it to be sound, but I'm unclear of what you want that to look like. If for a resolution, there are no legal laws for a resolution, they have to follow.
I want the process to be followed and I want board members included, a board member included on the committee, even if they're not allowed to speak.
So are you volunteering to sit on the committee?
I have, there was a year that I was the only person who did any committee work at all on this board. I will do anything this board needs, but nobody needs me to be, I don't need to be the person.
I'm not appointing, I'm asking if that's of interest to you.
I just feel like the board needs a representative on this committee if we're to do what Brooke is asking us to do. If we're to do what the superintendent's asking us to do, if we're to do what Dr. Ramos is asking us to do.
Well, can we take a, like, a sense of the board then? Because, I mean, I don't know that we need to continue to argue this if we agree. I, I agree that there should be a board member on the committee, so I, I don't know how the, and I don't know that we can take action on that or not. I'm not clear on that either.
So recapping, if we direct that there has to be a board member on there, what are the implications of that? That turns it into a, Rob and Andy, that turns it into anything?
Nope.
It's, it's not, it's not a board-formed committee. This board did not form a committee, did not charge a committee.
Right.
And, because we, we create a document that charges a committee, we put a time limit, how long you will work.
Yep.
What your work project is.
Right.
We, we make it clear that you are working for the board and the board only. You don't get to, like, go and have PR, you know, you know, whatever with, with the public. You are there to advise the board. This is something very different. This is an initiative from, from the office of the superintendent convening a committee or forums or whatever to get, gather information. I don't know, we could make a request. I don't know if we can direct to put anybody on those, on that committee. That's just my 10,000 view of it as I, as, from what I know, if, if we need to get maybe some legal advice on that, we could seek that, but that, that's about the extent of my knowledge.
We could start with making the request if the board agree, if, if we agree as a board that we'd like to make that request.
Okay.
I don't understand what the purpose is of that particular thing, though. What is the purpose of one of the board members sitting on the committee? If the committee is doing the work and bringing stuff back to it, why do we have to insert?
We, we.
Why can't we trust the committee?
As a committee, we have no power. All we can do is do our work and bring it back.
Right.
You know? And then the board, like in this case, Hollis could adopt the work of the committee. The co-op could say no. Brookline could go either way.
Make our own resolution.
So it's more from my lens of looking at, I have one student, they come here at three years old and they graduate at 18. I don't look at curriculum from Brookline and Hollis. I look at curriculum from what's gonna make that child as competitive as they can be, both socially, emotionally and academically. So, I mean, if you're saying you want a board member, fine, I'll see if there's a board member. It doesn't faze me in either way. I chose a group of people who I think are going to do exceptional work and they can bring it back to you and you can vote on it. You know, I think, to Rob's point, a resolution is relatively, you know, easy from a document point of view. But I don't want it to be a resolution if it doesn't have curriculum and instruction and social, emotional and all those other parts, because it just becomes a document. You know? One of the things when I, when I arrived here was a goal of going away from Hollis, Brookline and the co-op into looking through the lens of a student. And that's what we've been doing extensively. And the reason, just to address a point that was made earlier, the reason why, like, it's not appropriate for the SAU board is the SAU board cannot dictate what Hollis does, what Brookline does or what the co-op does. They don't have that authority. They only oversee, honestly, me. I'm the only hire of the SAU board. I hire everybody else. So it, it is designed to provide an umbrella of services, so it becomes cost-effective. So instead of three superintendents, three business managers, three special ed directors, three curriculum people, all right, you have one umbrella that serves multiple districts. So I'm not opposed to it, but my only concern would be, one of the things we've worked really hard at is we don't have anything telling the community we're gonna do this on the agenda. So if this is something we want to do, I would say let, the committee will start and we could put it on the agenda, because there might have been 25 other people that would have liked to be here if they thought something was going to be done. Now, if you're just simply asking me to put a school board member on it, I'll see if anybody's interested.
So why don't we just, we heard from Brooke. We're, we're, do a short roundtable in terms of requesting a board member to be on that committee.
I, I don't think requesting a board member to be on it is necessary. I'm very happy with the adjustments made from the end of, or for the initial presentation of the resolution till right now. I'm, I support this fully. I don't want to stand in the way of what the committee is doing. So, you know, I, I want to hear from the committee, though. So you guys are meeting, what, tomorrow, you said?
A week from tomorrow.
A week from tomorrow. Like, I would, I would like to hear what you have to say. I don't have a problem with it. I'd want to work, I would want to wordsmith it, clean up the grammar, things like that. That's punctuation, something. Sorry, it's my editing background. But I don't, I don't, I don't have the, a strong legal opinion. I think a resolution is important. I think you guys are already doing a whole bunch of the stuff for portrait of a portrait, profile portrait? Portrait of a cavalier?
Okay.
I don't know.
Amy?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the initiative. I don't have a strong feeling about a board member being on the committee. I personally feel like I, I have so much to learn about this, even though I'm supportive of it, I feel like I do not have a place on the committee. But I, I, I trust the committee to do their job and, and bring it to us.
So, so for me, I had an opportunity to speak on one-on-one basis with some of you and listening to some of the concerns and so forth, and I've had a little time to think about that. And I think for me, I'm comfortable from a standpoint, what I'd like to see is understanding what is the meeting schedule of this committee? And given the opportunity for maybe board members or community members to sit and listen to their work and seeing where they're going, I think it's a great opportunity for board members to, to listen to our, our community members of color and listen to their input. I, I really enjoy the input that we've gotten from those, from the community members since, since it started in June at the governing board, really listened and considered what was said there. So I think it's a great opportunity, but I think the committee needs to consider putting a meeting schedule, we're going to meet next Thursday and then on this date and on this date, publish when those meetings are going to take place and then communicate that so people know when that, when that's happening. I think for me, if I have the opportunity to schedule allowing, that I could maybe attend and sit and listen to the work that they're doing, I, I think I'm okay with that. I don't necessarily have to have a appointed school board member on the board and make this, you know, I don't know, nine, 10, 12-person committee. I know committees and when they get big, they get really hard to move forward. So I, I think that's where I stand.
I'd like to interrupt on one point only.
Sure.
And that is that the members of this committee are not public officials. I don't think that the RSAs require them or even make it, I don't know if it's okay for a meeting of such people to be public. I, I just don't have any idea. Like, if board numbers are, a board committee has to be public, et cetera, like Andy was saying, but, but RSA protect private individuals who don't have that immunity. So I don't know if that's opportu, available to you or not.
Are there opportunities for committee member, or, or, community members to listen and, and, and attend these committee meetings?
Well, as a committee, we haven't discussed that. And I need to discuss that with the committee, because again, I don't want to sit here and just dictate what's going on.
Right.
So we have heard from the board tonight, we can discuss it. And then, again, we, we don't intend to just show up with a final project. We intend to walk you down the roadmap and these board meetings are public and we intend to give regular updates either through a committee member or myself. So I think anybody in the community that wants to follow the process will get regular updates of how we proceed.
All right. I don't want to take it to a vote. I'm not gonna, we heard input from everyone. It sounds like we're not going to request that a board member be put on it, although we heard some very good input as to why that might be a good idea. I would like to keep this item on our discussion for, for future meetings, because I'd like to get updates. I'd like to hear when these meeting schedules are taking place and the opportunity maybe listen in, but I don't think we have too much more information to advance this conversation tonight.
Yeah, I just want clarification on that, that it's the consensus, or I don't know if that's the term, of the board, that the, they want to wait on the resolution to get input from the committee because they find that the resolution is in need of input from the superintendent committee before taking action on the resolution?
Well, yeah, well, we don't, we don't have anything on our agenda that's going to take up putting any kind of resolution into a first reading tonight, so.
So do we add that to the 4th of November meeting then, as a deliberative?
I'm sorry, say it again.
So do we add that to the 4th of November meeting as a deliberation point then, the agenda?
Either with the committee's input or with what, you know, whatever's available to us for November 4th that we will consider the resolutions as they evolve thus far.
We could certainly do that, yes. Yes, we could. It could also fail because members may feel that we haven't allowed enough time for the committee to do substantial enough work to accept. So, you know, it, if, if you, if you want to see a motion to move that into first reading in November.
I'd like.
Based on how much committee work, maybe the committee has nothing to provide other than maybe what we have tonight, it could, it could pass, it could fail. And, you know, depending on what the conditions are, I don't know what November will bring and the different.
Could I make a suggestion? Could I suggest that we say right now it'll be on the November meeting, agenda? And then based on the meaning of the committee, you know, as the agenda's being formed 10 days prior to the meeting, Andy will know better where the committee is and what type of agenda item would be on there and what type of supplemental information might be part of the packet. And if there is to be any wordsmithing, it's really not appropriate for it to be at a board meeting. So I would say you'd have the packet, think about any wordsmithing and then, you know, bring.
Refer it back.
Refer it back and, and bring that to the meeting rather than talk about commas on the meeting.
So why don't we put that up for next, for new business in November to take up a, a resolution and to see where that, where that gets us?
Just, just for board clarification, this came to the board as a correspondence, okay? So it's not in the board packet because correspondence doesn't get put in the board packet, it gets read. Something gets into the board packet when the administration conferring with the board chair decides it becomes an agenda item. So like for this to have been put in the packet can lead to the appearance that the board is sponsoring it, when right now all it is is a correspondence to the board, where next month, if Rob is telling me it's in the packet, then the document goes in the packet and we're giving public notice, this is the document we're discussing. So it's, it's, it's a very technical piece, but board packets are not simply, nobody can just email Rob and he decides to put stuff in. It has to be the SAU administration confers with the board chair or the majority of the board directs something to be in a packet.
Thank you for that, because the, I think that was part of the confusion. Thank you for that, because the, I think that was part of the confusion because the original one was in, in the board packet in July. And for people newer to the processes, that, that's what led to the confusion for some people of to why this one then was not.
Right. And again, that comes back to the, the SAU Board has no jurisdiction over the item, so it was just a discussion piece, whereas posting this in the packet would give the potential that people think that action's being taken.
One more question on the committee. I would love to see a faculty member on the committee, perhaps one that has interest in the work. Has that been considered at this point?
From a committee's standpoint, what I talked to Tiffany about, because she's co-facilitating, is doing a wealth of work with faculty, but not necessarily looking at just one individual because there'll be questions for faculty, there'll be different pieces for faculty. So they will be involved in this process as we go through the process. So that's, that's why we didn't simply put a faculty person on it, because, again, it's got to be kind of K to 12, and we'll have some forums with faculty, and, you know, part of this is also talking about PD, so there's, there'll be an extensive role for faculty. They will not be shut out of this process.
So I'm adding that resolution into first reading, be put into the next business on our agenda for next time. So we'll keep that, as well as the October 9th breakout of ins and outs, of requests as well as discussion on a possible next check-in date. I think it's later in November, so I'll, I'll be sure to make sure we get that into the agenda for next time. This was a good discussion, it's a critical discussion, I think, that I, I think was worthwhile having, and I appreciate everyone's passion to, to help move the board forward on this, on this work. With that, I'd like to move on to the annual meeting discussion.
I just wanted to put it on the board's radar, and we can take action next month, but I'm considering moving the Hollis annual meeting to the high school because I don't know if we'll be out of the pandemic. And from a social distancing point of view, you know, you're looking at a crowd of about 50 to 60 in the multipurpose room. And again, I, I just wouldn't want to get into a situation where we've done all this work around social and physical distancing, and then we don't have a facility. But I think from our standpoint, we just need to know if that's something the board would want to do. Not asking for any direction tonight, but it'll be on the next meeting to kind of, potentially, if everything goes well, we'll review the date for annual meeting, and we'll talk a little bit about the location. And we also need to have just a discussion around warrant articles, because, again, not knowing which way COVID will go, you know, we don't want to necessarily have 15 to 20 items and be there for an extensive period of time. So we really need to be conscious of that as we move forward.
Any discussion on that?
I'm fine with that plan.
Yeah. I, I think it makes sense to use the largest space that we can to, to provide the social distancing and still conduct a productive meeting and get our warrants through, or considered. And I like the idea, I, I think it's important also to get our dates set so we have a lot of soak time in the community, that that's when we're meeting for our annual, annual get-together. And also, I like the idea of having maybe a streamlined warrant that has the essential stuff that we need. If everything is wonderful and, you know, this is the warrant we would like to have, but if we're really challenged from a standpoint of COVID and, you know, who knows what's happening in March this, this coming year? And to have that kind of streamlined warrant, I think it makes, like, makes a lot of sense.
Well, I think we also need to have a Plan B.
Yeah, we, we have some experience in drive-through voting. So, I mean, we would look at the plan that the Co-op used, and if, if things did get that bad, I would work with the moderator and have discussions with him to see what direction it'd like to go in. Obviously, face-to-face with full debate is a New Hampshire tradition, which we totally support, but I absolutely agree with you, Carol, that a Plan B would be good to have in the back pocket.
For sure.
Andy, would there be consideration given to the density of these meetings as well as the, I'm just going to call it pollution from adults in the building from meetings, and then students in the buildings during the day? So, you know, typically, we might have two different meetings, district meetings, right, in one week?
Yep.
And I assume you're thinking of Brookline also?
Brookline's gymnasium is almost a regulation gymnasium.
Oh, really?
So, I, I feel a little more comfortable, but at the same, but at the same time, you know, as we move forward, we'll be discussing it with the Brookline board, and that's a possibility. We ran voting in Brookline at the last, the local elections, so I feel quite confident with the mechanical devices that we have for cleaning, that we can go in, I mean, hopefully we wouldn't be at a, I mean, the Co-op, we've had annual meetings go to 2:00 AM, you know, but at the same time, we have the last few years set definite ending times, so that's something we have to discuss, just so that we could make sure we had the building prepared the next morning. The, the other option too, if the board were to choose, is you could look at a sadly.
Which has always been my preference.
Right.
Any other input at this time for annual meeting?
Okay, I'd like to move on to SAU rent and long-term lease.
Yes, tonight's discussion just focuses around, next month, as we start to get into budget, I'm going to be coming back to talk to you about the SAU bond for the barn, for the facilities. One of the items that Carol will recall from her serving on the Budget Committee is the Hollis Budget Committee had asked for a long-term lease. So at our October meeting with the SAU Board, we'll discuss a long-term lease, probably a 10-year lease, because that would be the life of the barn. And that would guarantee tenants in the SAU, because one of the concerns was what happens if the SAU administration were to move up? And now we're paid for a barn, we've got this wonderful space, and there are no tenants. So we're looking at that. As part of that, again, kind of to bring back to you, in November, I would begin to develop what I would call the rent payment for that lease. And my first thoughts are the following. In FY '22, there'd be no increase in the rent because we don't have a new facility, and the SAU budget is already kind of maxed. FY '23, which would mean if the voters approved the bond, we would know the space is arriving, so we would put in the funding for the, the new square footage. So the, whatever the bond square footage is, times the rental rate, and that would be the increase in FY '23. And then what we would do is what we did in the past, the board, working with the administration, would set rental increases so that, from a budget standpoint, Brookline, Co-op, and the Hollis Board can budget their rental pieces. I know that the, there was talk about the percentage of, of the rent that would go to offset the cost of the bond. So that would need to be a discussion for the Hollis Board as well, because typically what happens now is the rental income comes in, and that gets diverted into the maintenance trust, and that's how we maintain the facility. Now, we may say that the all-new rental income that comes in goes to offset the cost of the bond. The physical asset will continue to be owned by Hollis, so at the end of the 10 years, they'll have whatever the rental payment was to reduce the cost of the bond to a Hollis taxpayer, but they'll also have the physical asset that they can release for another 10 years to the SAU administration, or do whatever they see fit. One other critical component is if we go through this process and the bond is approved and we approve a lease, we also need to make sure that we do the legal work to separate the SAU field from the SAU house and parking. And that field becomes the property for the Hollis School District, so that if, if in 10 years, 20 years, you wanted to sell the barn and the renovated facility, you would still maintain the property, which I think you're going to need for the long-term playgrounds or any other future uses. So if that's kind of an acceptable concept, then I'll, I'll work to bring it back in a more formal proposal, and Carol can share that, kind of what the thought process is with the, the Hollis Budget Committee.
Yep. Thank you.
Comments, questions? So I had a chance to think about this a little bit. I know Carol and I did a lot of extra deep-dive work into this. I think all the rationale for doing such a project on that, that property still stands. The need stands, the reason why we need to do it stands, the value that we would get out of doing it stands. I did think a little bit about the two major takeaways that we heard last year. One was the long-term lease, but the other one was an equitable distribution of the cost for the pro, project in some way. There was a lot of discussion that we heard from, you know, what districts are paying what? Why is Hollis, you know, handling all the brunt of the project and all this? We got really in deep conversations around that. And, you know, as I thought about this, you know, you could structure a lease, and I always thought about the, the square footage charge is really a charge to maintain the property and keep it, keep it working in, in good shape. I look at the, the, the bond to do the project kind of separately now than I may have considered, or we have considered last year. So I'm wondering if you, we could structure a long-term lease agreement that would stipulate the square footage and the period at which we would review that, what that cost is, and then, you know, if, based on current conditions, hey, the square footage rent needs to go up by two, two bucks because we're having trouble keeping the maintenance on that, on that square footage. And then break out the project as a, as a, like, property assessment, or the, a bond assessment. So we have two components that make up the costs to the district. One is the square footage rental that rent, that will persist, and then you have an additional assessment of the improvement assessment, improvement assessment of some sort that breaks out some sort of an equitable model between the districts. And the other thing I was thinking of is perhaps that long-term lease agreement would go beyond the life of the bond for a lot of reasons, for, because the districts are being assessed, you know, for, for the project, they're going to want some additional value after the project is over and know that we're not going to... So I, I'm thinking of kind of interesting ways to structure a lease, and I can certain, we can talk, I can talk more about it, and perhaps we can bring more detail to the next meeting around that. But that's, that's some of the things I was thinking.
And just so the board realizes, we will have to use two separate attorneys because there's a natural conflict of interest, because I occupy both seats. So I'm going to be recommending Tom Clausen to work on the Hollis side, and Jim O'Shaughnessy to work on the SAU side from the standpoint of to take away the conflict of interest that potentially arises.
Yeah, good point. Okay, so we'll hear more in November?
Yep.
Okay, very good. I'd like to move to deliberations to see what action the board will take regarding Policy BCA, Board Member Code of Conduct and Ethics, I'm sorry, Code of Ethics, Annual Renewal. So as you know, we do this every year publicly. We have a policy that stipulates the board member's role, their conduct within that role as a board member. So we publicly renew our pledge to that policy. And I have to say, this was something that we started doing several years ago, and I, I really think it's very important because I think it, it keeps us grounded into what is our role, reminds us of our stakeholders, and actually, I see a lot of DEI elements in that policy as well, that we publicly renew our pledge to. So I think this is one of the really crown jewels that makes this, our boards and other districts do the same thing, keeps us a high-functioning governance entity, so...
I moved that the board by roll call state agreement to adhere to Policy BCA, Board Member Code of Ethics.
Second.
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 So discussion around that? So by roll call, Brooke, why don't you kick us off?
I'm just, I'm just, am I supposed to read something, or am I just supposed to agree to it?
No, you're agreeing.
Brooke Arthur, aye.
Yes.
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy Kelner, aye.
Tammy Fried, aye.
Robert Mann, aye. I pledge to Policy BCA. To see what actions the board will take regarding Policy DFA, Investment Policy, Annual Renewal.
Move to adopt Policy DFA Investment.
Second.
Discussion.
Question, Andy, can you speak to the Hollis School District's investments, if any?
We typically don't have any, but this gives the board a policy if they were. The only thing we have right now, and I wouldn't call it an investment, is we have the money that was approved for the H-Smart bond, so that is obviously generating interest at whatever the going rate is, because it has to be very fluid as we continue to move through pieces of the project. But there are no other funds at this time invested on behalf of the, just the school district.
Any other questions? Okay, I have one. The DFA itself calls out the Hollis-Brookline Cooperative School Board, is, is not directing Hollis District. I'm wondering if that's problematic, because it's essentially not our policy.
If, what I'm guessing happened, and I didn't notice it, is that we, that's been in each of the packets, and when Jackie just carried it over. So if the, the motion is correct, I, I think you're fine, because my understanding is the only thing that's different between Brookline, Hollis-Brookline, and Hollis is the name of the district. So it is the same process. I think Tammy's motion was for the Hollis School District. If you're uncomfortable, we can easily bring it back next month.
Or I could, we could do an amendment, as, so we could vote on it as amended.
Right, you could do that as well. You could, you can vote on it as the Hollis policy.
Do we, do we know if DFA, that we have our own version of that?
We do, it's identical, it used to be. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we do. And we, and we re-adopted it every year.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. So I'll call the vote then, by roll call?
No, this is the roll call.
Brooke Arthur, aye.
It's not roll call?
It's not, I didn't.
Okay. Then, all in favor? Sorry. A little slow on the uptake there. 5-0-0. Do we have a non-public schedule?
We do.
We do? All right. I will take a motion to go into non-public.
So moved.
So moved.
Go ahead.
We have to read the...
Yeah, you got to read this one. And this one's by poll. We got to poll the board.
I motion that the board go into non-public session pursuant to RSA 91-A colon 3, Roman numeral 2, A, the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, and C, to discuss a matter which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself.
Do we have a second?
Second.
By roll call?
Brooke Arthur, aye.
Carol Roy, aye.
Amy Kelner, aye. Tammy, aye.
Robert Mann, aye. We will be going into non-public, and shortly after coming out of non-public, we're going to straight to adjourn. We have no other business, so folks watching at home, you're not missing any further business of the board after we come out of non-public. I'm going to take an immediate motion to adjourn. With that, we are in non-public.